Will come to order, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gold.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Commissioner Abraham, if you'll do the invocation tonight, please. And pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Wilson.
Our heads. Our Father, we give you honor, we give you praise. We thank you for the example that your son, Jesus Christ, set for us. And Father, our prayer today is that we come together and we sit down and we reason together. These things we ask in your shewers' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
I move that, well, first of all, I move that Pam Spencer come up to the podium.
Need a second for that.
Need a second for that.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We're about to have a public hearing for our Comcast cable franchise renewal. And we do have Matthew Kelly here. He is the External Affairs Manager for Indiana and Kentucky. And before we get started in the public hearing, I wanted to give just a really short presentation about what is our franchise and what kind of does it cover, just like a five-minute presentation here. Okay, what is a cable franchise? Well, cable companies are using our public rights-of-way to build their cable network. So, the franchise is the formal agreement that we have that's between the city and the cable provider, outlining all of the terms and conditions for the use of that public right-of-way. That's the reasoning behind having a cable franchise agreement. But the franchise also imposes some obligations on the cable company, such as different customer service obligations, and it does include public benefits. And the major public benefit that we can think of is our PEG channels, our Public Education and Government Access Channels. We have three PEG channels that are through Comcast, through the city of Paducah. We have Paducah Two, which is the one that you see a lot of the nonprofits do programs on. There is a bulletin board on there, as well as you'll see Convention and Visitors Bureau has their tourism show on Paducah Two. And we have a Government Eleven, which is, city commission meetings are aired on Government Eleven, Planning Commission, the McCracken Fiscal Court, in addition to the other programming that we do in association with West Kentucky Community and Technical College, such as the Paducah View episodes, Your City at Work, City Profile. Human Rights Commission has a program on there called Raising the Standard. So those are our access channels. And then the third one is not operated through the college, but it is Channel Seven, which is WSIU. It's a PBS channel, but also the library puts programming on that. So, our cable franchise has those three access channels. Our franchise that we have between Comcast and the city of Paducah, that is our franchise agreement. The current agreement is a ten-year agreement, and it is expiring on November 1st of this year. That is kind of while we're going into this public hearing and going into entering our negotiations. It is a non-exclusive franchise. Any cable company that wanted to come to the city of Paducah and build their system could, but that is very expensive for a lot of cable companies to do. That would be called overbuilding and coming into a system without any subscribers and building a network. So, any company could come in and do that. We're not excluding anybody from doing that. It's just very difficult, very expensive for a lot of companies to try to get into a community that already has a cable company and already has the competition from satellite providers as well. So, it is non-exclusive, because we get that question in every now and then, could another cable company come in? Sure, we're not excluding anybody. The franchise renewal process is a legal process that is governed by the cable law. It is the Cable Act, Section 626 of its federal law. So there is a whole procedure that's outlined there. And we got our formal request from Comcast to renew its franchise with us, February of 2014. And it's a certain amount of months ahead of the expiration date that they were supposed to give us their formal renewal request, and they did. So we are now in the process of working with Comcast. We have secured Moss and Barnett. That is a company out of Minnesota. It's a legal company. We were working with Brian Grogan, he's an attorney, telecommunications expert. And he is working with us for our legal expertise, as well as our negotiation assistance. He is an expert in telecommunications law. We worked with him ten years ago, and he's worked a lot with Comcast. So he's very familiar in sitting at the negotiating table with Comcast. So a franchise agreement, what it cannot do, and this is something that the public, we get questions about this periodically. The franchise agreement doesn't control rates. Federal law prohibits cities from regulating the rates. So if we have customers who have questions or concerns about rates, that's between the subscriber and Comcast. We cannot regulate the rates. And that's why we have competition in the city with, between the satellite providers. So that is part of how the rates kind of start equalizing there. But we don't have control over the rates. We also don't have control over which channels in the programming that Comcast selects and makes available to its subscribers. So if somebody calls us and asks for a certain network, that's not something that we can control. That's something that they can make a request of Comcast, and hopefully Comcast could maybe make that happen for them. We also do not control the internet service. That is not part of our franchise agreement. So our franchise agreement, what are the topics that we do want to hear from the public tonight? Our topics for the public hearing, customer service. That is something that we can outline, and we do have customer service specifics in our franchise and our ordinance. Quality and reliability of the cable signal, use of the rights-of-way by Comcast. Those are topics that we would like to hear from the public. And the benefit of our PEG channels, our public access channels. Those are things that we would love to hear the public's comments. So that's my five-minute or less overview of the cable franchise. And now I will turn it over to the mayor to launch the public hearing.
I move that we are now open, that we now open the public meeting for the cable television franchise renewal with Comcast. Need a second.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. So, we have the public hearing now. Does anyone have anything? Tom, come on up, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Tom Butler, and I work at West Kentucky Community and Technical College, and have been the manager of at least the P and the G of the PEG access channels for longer than I would like to admit, probably closer to as long as many of these people in the audience may have been alive. And I'm here tonight just to advocate for what we do. And what we do essentially is provide access to the media, to people who can't otherwise afford that access. Mainly, that means to us, on the, on the public side, is working with nonprofit organizations, providing them the technical equipment and the expertise to produce the message that they want the subscriber base of Comcast in Paducah and McCracken County to hear. And we do that service free of charge for those. So they have access to the media that they cannot afford otherwise. And so, we think that that's a really good service. Another reason that I am here is to implore the negotiators to, to talk to Comcast about upgrading the resolution of their services for the access channels. Right now, if you are familiar with the types of signals that you are, that are available, you can get a standard definition signal, and you can get a high-definition signal on Comcast. Well, the standard definition signal, we figured up today, is the same resolution as TV when it began. And those are the lower-level channels, especially two through thirteen. All of the access channels are standard definition. And I have a little diagram here that shows you, and I'll explain it, and then send it around so that you can see it. What we're putting out on the cable now is standard definition, up here in this small box. What we have been producing for several years is high-definition. But we can't, through the technology that we're provided by the cable company, get that, that onto the cable. What we are now able to do is called 4K. That's the, one of the newer technologies that is now available, which is four times, essentially four times the resolution of a standard definition channel. So if you flip over to Channel Two or Channel Eleven at your house, and you have a big, nice, sixty-inch high-definition TV, our signal doesn't look very well, because it's not a high-definition signal, and your television is built for higher resolutions. It won't handle 4K right now unless you've bought one in the last couple of months. They are just now starting to come out with, with those, maybe a year. I don't, I don't know exactly how long that technology's been commercially available. But I would like to see in the negotiations that, that all of the access channels be made available on high-definition. So that was another reason that we're here. Also tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about public access or government access, but I have two of my staff members and a few of our producers that are regular users of those channels. Specifically, Dr. Belt produces a show for, and she's uniquely qualified, because she produces a show for the public access channel and for the governmental access channel. So she has experience with us and with those channels from, on two different levels. So I hope that she might have something to say tonight. And we have a couple of other producers here, who I would like to have them talk to you about the benefits of those, because those channels to a cable company are like real estate. They're worth money to them. And they're not making money off of, off of those channels from us. And sometimes, and Comcast has been wonderful, a wonderful partner for the pub, for the public educational and governmental access channels for as long as I've been here. So I have no complaint with them. But in other communities, they're taking away those channels, because they're like real estate, and they can put channels on there that can make them money. Well, we're not about making money. We're about providing a service to the community and to those people who can't afford that service otherwise. And so, I would like to ask a couple of our producers if they would be willing to say something, or if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening.
Hi again, Mayor, hi everyone.
Well, I'm excited about being here, and we need to meet. I'm excited about being here, because, first of all, I live and reside in an area that is award-winning. We are nationally known, and I dare say internationally known, because of media, and, and I'm grateful about being in this environment. The second thing I want to say is that we have a television department in our community college. And I don't think it's second to anything. I believe that it's one of the best things that our college can have, and that is a television department. And through this television department, we get quality shows that are produced and hosted by men and women who are guided and nurtured and mentored by Tom Butler, who is our fearless leader over there, and quite a marvelous individual, I might add. He makes us look and sound gooder than we are, and that is for real, real. The other thing is, is that we do need to be very, very mindful and empathetic about all of the people that we serve and represent and who see us all the time. And they cannot access this, the media, in the way they would like to if they could. But because they cannot, we get to do these things for them. And we, we do need some upgrades. Wouldn't it be terrible if nothing, anything ever was upgraded? Wouldn't we dissipate very quickly in our environment? And so, there are some upgrades that are needed, and probably should be taken care of as quickly as possible, because we have obligation to our citizenry. And then, the benefits of having public access, and, you know, these television shows and things on Paducah Two and the government channel, they provide an opportunity for people to become very close to the leaders and the movers and the shakers of our community, our city and our county, and to also know that everything that's going on around them is accessed by people they'll never meet, but who are very impressed and appreciative of what's going on around us. And our public access television shows educate, they empower, they respect, and they provide an opportunity for people to feel better about who and what they are in our, in our community. It's educational, because most people won't know some of the things they see on Paducah Two and the government channel unless they were to tune in. And I talk to people a lot, and I listen a lot. And one of the things that you, Mayor, are very good at, one of the many things that you are very good at doing is that is listening. And so, I try to listen to people and hear what they have to say. Not to listen to, wait until they shut up so I can start talking, but to listen to them, to hear what they have to say, and to try to feel what they have in their hearts and their minds. Because most people don't feel like they have a voice. And so, when you allow them to use their voice directly or indirectly, then they get to grow, and they get to go, and they get to be better at who and what they are, sometimes right there on their couch. And so, whatever needs to be done, I employ, I employ, employ you to please make sure it's done. All the negotiators and all the persons who are going to have something to do with the decisions that are going to be made, please take good care of our citizens and their needs through the public access to the, through the media. And I thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Joey Skaggs. I am a director at West Kentucky Community and Technical College. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a couple of our producers that I work with closely. One of them is Michael Swinford. He is a Vietnam veteran who hosts a show called Veterans Voice. And we do this show about monthly, at least once a month. And we talk about, he has different veterans come on the show and talk about their experiences. And a lot of them are doing other outreaches in the community, doing other, participating in other programs, and they want to help bring awareness. So he brings them on the show, and, you know, it kind of broadcasts them, get their message out. And it's one of the shows that I, you know, really enjoy doing, because I, our veterans are, you know, very important to us, and I think it's super important to help them out in any way we can. And if it's something just as simple as, you know, providing them an outlet to where they can have a voice and, you know, get that out, I think it's, I think it's super special. So, that was one of them. And the second one Pam mentioned earlier was the CBB, the Visitors Bureau here at Paducah. Laura, not Schoenberg anymore, Oswald, she got married. She is the host of that, and pretty much of that show. We highlight, you know, interesting attractions around Paducah, and all the kind of cool stuff that there is, that the city has to offer. She sent a statement, which reads, "Peduca Two is an invaluable resource for the Paducah Visitors Bureau. Access to public media through this consistent partnership has enhanced, has enhanced our organization's ability to educate stakeholders on the value of tourism and local cultural assets. Paducah Two is an ally to all of us in producing quality, meaningful content that enhances communication, awareness, and purpose within our community." And again, that was Laura Oswald. So, just wanted to help bring this up to you guys, and I wanted to get this message across, and I think so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Reverend Walton.
Mayor, Commissioners, I am Pastor Anthony Walton, a pastor at Christ Temple Church here in Paducah, Kentucky. I also have another nonprofit organization called The Life Community. And what we do is, we cater to mostly ex-offenders or people that are just getting out of prison. And we do a lot of things for people who are on drugs, trying to get off of drugs and things of that nature. So I have a lot of ministries under that Life Community. And one of the things that we do that I feel is so very important is we do a life after lockup television program. And before I even mention that, I want to say that I, I did three years, two months, and some days in prison from 1984 to 1987 for armed robbery. And see, and I say that because some people have told me that if I didn't tell them that, they wouldn't know it. Why wouldn't they know it? Because sometimes people have different views of what an armed robber looked like or what an ex-offender looks like. And sometimes we get preconceived notions on ex-offenders. So the program, the television program that, that I do is to show the public another side of the criminal justice system by making these people real people, and letting the community know, or the public know, that people make mistakes. Everybody is, when they get out of prison, they don't end up going back. Some people we interviewed have, have had some, some very good lives after prison. And some have actually been in prison for a number of years that were innocent. As a matter of fact, I, I got a guy from Florida that did thirty-eight years in prison for nothing. Another guy did nine years in prison for nothing. Another guy did thirty-two years in prison for nothing. And these are things that I bring to the program, just to show the public that, you know, take another look at people. Everybody is, some people don't ever need to get out of prison. But some people, they get out, and they just need opportunity. They need a chance. They need to be looked at as, as people, and not necessarily the crime that they committed. And that the television program that, that we were allowed to do helps to do that. It helps to bring these people into our homes and let the, the public know that these are real people. And what they deserve is an opportunity to live. And that's, that's the thing that I really try to focus on. I interview them, we talk back and forth. Some have written books. Some are, are still struggling. Some still have not yet been given an opportunity to, to, to live. But that's what I try to do. I try to make sure that the public sees them as people, and not just as, as ex-offenders. So, whatever it is that, that we need to do to continue these programs that, that help bring public awareness, that's what I'm here for. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kayler and Commissioners. I am Heidi Serheinrich. I'm the Executive Director down at Paducah Cooperative Ministry. These folks have been extremely eloquent, and they've said about everything there is to say. But what I would like to say very briefly is what I love about Paducah Two. Paducah Cooperative Ministry has had a long-running show called Reflections. And what I think is unique about Paducah Two is it offers an opportunity for dialogue, for actual conversation, where we can sit down and we can discuss homelessness from all different angles. You know, what causes homelessness? Why are people homeless? Where are they? What do we do? Is it working? We have time to sit down and engage in that conversation, back and forth, give and take. And, you know, this is such a fast society we live in. This is one of those rare places where for thirty minutes you can sit down and really talk and get different perspectives. It's also a very unique place for PCM, especially where you can bring together clergy members. A clergy member from the local Presbyterian church, one from the synagogue, one from the mosque. And you can sit down and you can talk about issues of faith in our community. Where else can you do that? Where else can you say, well, what are some hot topics in your congregation? Or how does your faith tradition interpret this particular thorny piece of scripture? You know, and, and there just aren't places where people sit down and, and talk and have that back and forth and give and take. And that's what I think is so unique about Paducah Two. And I hope that we don't ever lose that opportunity. And so, I appreciate your time and your consideration. And they also make me look taller and smarter, and I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Tubbs. I'm with the Kentucky Cancer Program here in the Purchase District. We really enjoy working with WKCTC. And they give me an avenue to reach the uninsured and underinsured, more so than I could by myself. I'm just one person in the Purchase District. And my job requires me to educate on several different types of cancers and screenings in the area. Just recently, we had, this is just an example, I'm gonna leave with you. We had a lady that, she was forty years old, a mother of five. And she had recently seen a show that we had recorded. It had nothing to do with me or the topic that I'm about to discuss, but she knew the, the things that we offered, and she knew that we could provide a screening for free. She had shown me a spot on her back, and she said, "Does this look sketchy to you?" And I said, I knew in, in everything that I had been taught that it met all the requirements of melanoma. I didn't want to scare her, but I said, "You really need to see a dermatologist yesterday, but you really need to see someone." So, as of today, I can report that she's been found stage one melanoma, which is early. And they've caught it, and so they're going to, you know, get the rest of it out, and she'll be fine. But all of that happened because we had a partnership with them. And it all started with that, and so we could really not do without them. They are such a great vehicle for us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
They make me look taller, too. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I know most of you guys, a couple of you have hosted TV shows with us, and we appreciate that. I'm reading on behalf of a couple of individuals who couldn't be here tonight. The first one is Dr. Ricky Burse. He is Executive Director at New Pathways for Children, and I'm gonna read a portion of what he has sent us. It says, "As the direct, as the Executive Director of a nonprofit with limited resources, it is always a blessing to find community partners eager to support and promote our work. New Pathways for Children serves children who suffer the trauma of neglect, abandonment, abuse, and the breakdown of support for fa, from family. Sadly, the numbers of children in our community suffering these types of trauma are many. As a private nonprofit who does not receive any government funding reaching potential partners is critical to our ability to serve hurting children." And Dr. Burse goes on to say, "The expense to produce and air these programs would be cost prohibitive, prohibitive for such a small agency like New Pathways. But through the production team at the college and the programs being aired on Channel Two, we are able to benefit tremendously." And that comes from Dr. Ricky Burse, who is Executive Director out at New Pathways for Children. And there's so many stories that, that these guys have shared, and so many others that we could share. Another one, Ann Bidwell has, has sent me, and she asked that I read it. And it says, "Ann Bidwell is the Development Director for Hope Unlimited Family Care Center. I've worked with community agencies for the past fifteen years. I know all of them have benefited by the time, talent, and commitment WKCTC's television department has invested for the good of others. It's been wonderful to see so many step up and host programs of public concern and information. In a world of ever-shrinking soundbites, a long-format interview program has a lot to offer. Government agencies and public service organizations know WKCTC's television department helps them to connect to those who stand to, to benefit the most from civic programs." The, and I quote here, "For the community, by the community, approach means our unique, unique voice as people can continue to speak loudly for itself." Thank you.
Thank you. Very true. Anyone else? Would you like to speak tonight?
I, just a couple words.
Sure.
Again, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. I'm Matt Kelly, in Government Affairs with Comcast. And we're glad to see that everyone recognizes the kind of value that these public education and government channels offer to the community. And just to let you know, the- Um, and just to let you know, uh, the, the HD question, that is a part of the negotiations. Uh, Brian Grogan, the, uh, your representative consultant, has, uh, placed that as one of the, uh, items that will, we will be negotiating. So, you know, our, I'm here to tell you right now, we're not planning on taking away any of, any of the PEG channels. We're not even suggesting it. It never even occurred to me to be, in fact, because we understand how valuable it is to, to you and your community, but also we feel that it makes our network better as well. So, you know, we, we compete against other video providers in the marketplace, so we want to make sure that we provide services that our customers want. The, the biggest thing is really, is when a channel goes fallow or goes unused. It is, as you said, very valuable real estate is what we kind of look at it as. And so if it's being used appropriate, which these are, we're more than happy to provide this service and we understand the, the criticality of it in your community. But I will be here the remainder of the evening, and if you have questions afterwards with the public or you, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm glad that you do see the value in these channels because, uh, I think they're very important to the community and the service that they provide and the people that have access to those and such a good information source for many people, uh, things that people learn on those channels that, uh, maybe they had never even thought about, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, we'll let the record show as well that the Commission received a, a written comment from, uh, Alicia Fox. I believe you all have that, so the record will show that as well. Um, regarding the HD feature, um, now you know it's not just Brian Grogan asking for it. Thank you, everybody, for bringing that up. That gives a lot of strength, I think, negotiation table for that. Excuse me.
Okay. I move that we now close the public hearing and begin our regularly scheduled meeting. Second. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, you had the minutes tonight.
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for July fifth, twenty sixteen, City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the C- City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. Everybody's looked at the minutes? City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Under motion, Commissioner Gold.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Contracts and agreement, security agreement with McCracken County and Geneva Products, Inc., for fifty-four hundred Commerce Drive. Professional service agreement with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., for construction of restroom facilities for the tennis courts in Noble Park. Contract for services from, or with Paducah Waldewell Mural Board executed by the City Manager. Communication service agreement with West McCracken Fire Protection District for nine-one-one Services. Communication service agreement with Concord Fire Protection District for nine-one-one Services. Change order number one with ANK Construction for the Paducah Dome Relocation Project. Temporary nine-one-one communications service agreement with McCracken County Fiscal Court. Service agreement with Motorola Solutions for eight-hundred MHZ radio equipment.
Second.
City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We have three municipal orders tonight. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the first one.
Yes, ma'am. Upon the recommendation of City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Okay, any questions? Okay, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Application for a Twenty-Sixteen Community Development Block Grant in the Amount of One Million Dollars" from the Office of the Governor's Department for Local Government for the Flood Wall Pump Station Number Two Rehabilitation Project be adopted.
Second.
Mayor Commission, uh, what we're looking for here is some help through the CDBG program, uh, for the, uh, rehabilitation of the pump plant. And, uh, we have Cheryl Chino here, who is, uh, vastly, um, the, the orchestra behind putting together this application for us, and there's a lot of work that goes into this. And some of the things that we need to talk about are some of these surveys, uh, that's going on, uh, that we have to get, uh, to complete the application, but I wanted Cheryl to come up and talk to you all, you all a little bit about the application to, to, for you all to know what goes into that and then some of the things we need to appeal to the public to help us with.
Hi Cheryl.
Hi guys, how are you doing?
Good.
Okay, the Community Development Block Grant Program, um, allows us to do a, a variety of different projects. Specifically with the pump station, we are, we are applying through the Public Facilities Program, which is, allows us to request up to one million dollars as long as we meet the match requirements. So, our application will be for that one million dollars with a four-point-one-million-dollar match requirement for a total project cost of five-point-one million. In order to qualify to apply, we have to meet one of three national objectives. And one of those is to benefit low-to-modern-income persons, which is, um, what we are trying to do with this project. In order to do that, we had to survey all the residents, well, I'll take that back, a sampling of the residents within the service area of pump station number two. And that required three-hundred-and-fifty door-to-door surveys. We have completed the vast majority of those. However, we need approximately seventy-five in order to be eligible to even submit the application. Applications due August first, and we're having a lot of difficulty getting folks to complete the survey for us. So I want to appeal to the public that, um, if you have someone knocking on your door asking you to complete this survey, please take the time. It's thirty seconds tops. Um, it's a one-page, um, survey form. It does ask you a lot of household information. I want to stress that that information is confidential. It will not be shared with any other agency other than the City of Paducah, myself, and possibly the funding agency if they choose to, uh, review those surveys. Um, so again, it is very important that the public understand that we cannot apply for these funds if we do not complete those surveys in the next week to ten days. Um, so, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Rick and let him talk specifically about the project.
Now, have you taken those door-to-door and mailed them?
We have to make the first initial contact by knocking on their door, which we have done that with virtually every, um, survey. We have to make at least three attempts at three different times of the day and week before we can go to an alternate. We are past going to alternates. We, we need to get the surveys that we have on our list completed. They've been randomly chosen throughout the service area of pump station number two. Um, and we are down to the last seventy-five or so, and it's always that last little bit that's the most difficult to get. Um, we do have some folks that have refused to complete the survey. If, if that has happened, we, again, stress to those folks that this is very important to the City of Paducah to get these grant funds to, to make the rehabilitation to pump station number two. And if you've been contacted, they can contact me at City Hall and, and the Planning Department, and we'll send somebody out to complete that survey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing I wanted to do here, Mayor Commission, was to remind the public, uh, I've put a slide up here, to remind the public of the service area of pump plant number two. And this is where the sampling was, uh, I think we have like four thousand residents in there, and of that, we had to survey at least three-hundred-and-fifty. So, we are actually going door-to-door, or, uh, staff or, or, uh, interns have been going door-to-door trying to get these, uh, surveys complete. And, uh, so if, uh, you're part of the viewing public and you're seeing this and you feel like that you live in that area, uh, of, of that boundary, please, if somebody does come to your door, uh, take the time, fill that survey out, uh, because our next opportunity for application, correct me if I'm wrong, will be April, uh, of next year. Uh, that's the next opening for this, and we're trying to beat that window, uh, of, what, August the first, to, to complete these surveys. So, uh, if you could remember that graphic a little bit, I know it's a little bit convoluted, but, uh, please don't turn us away and, and, uh, help us with those surveys.
So we'll get some coverage in the newspaper and on TV, I'm sure, to, to get the message out to more people. Okay. What else can we do?
Approve supplemental of the application.
Do what?
Approve supplemental of the application.
Okay.
That's important.
We could always pray, couldn't we, Bernice? That everybody answers that survey.
And I would, I would like to thank Cheryl. Uh, she's got a lot of hard work in this application, uh, for this. It's not an easy task. And when she brought this to me, it was just, it was just like, I'm, oh my goodness, I mean, how hard is it to, you know, help get some of these funds, uh, but some of our, you can't use census data, you have to go out and collect it, uh, door-to-door, so.
This was, uh, also a very good example of teamwork between departments, because a number of department directors working with Cheryl and Rick and others, um, scrambled, um, bodies, if you will, to help go out in the field and, uh, do the surveying. So it was very much an organizational-wide effort as well.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Deed Consideration Cert- uh, Certificate for the City's Acceptance of the Transfer of Real Properties Located at Six-Twenty-Six Boyd Street, Eight-Hundred, uh, Eight-Eighteen, Eight-Twenty, and Eight-Thirty-Two North Seventh Street, Paducah, Kentucky be adopted."
Second. Hi Greg.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is some property that was, uh, in an estate that the, uh, state decided they don't want. The city's been having to maintain some of this property. They were willing to sign it over to the city for future redevelopment, and it's a lot easier and cheaper than going through the foreclosure process.
Okay, good solution.
Good solution.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We have a couple of ordinances for adoption. Commissioner Gold.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving an Agreement with the Reedland Farley Fire Protection District for Dispatch Services and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Said Agreement." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves a communication service agreement with the Reedland Farley Fire Protection District for nine-eleven dispatch services, which will begin on July first, two thousand and sixteen, and authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement. This, the initial term of this agreement shall be for a period of four years. Such terms shall automatically renew at the end of the initial term and any subsequent terms thereafter for an additional four years unless either the city or Reedland Farley decide to terminate or renegotiate the agreement.
Second.
City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. I'm glad you got to read that.
Me too.
Commissioner Rhodes.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter Seventy Parks Recreation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That section seventy-dash-thirty-two, public parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas available to the public is amended to include the Ohio River Boat Launch and Market Square Art Park. This ordinance renames Fourteenth Street Park to Health Park. This ordinance also deletes Martin Luther King Junior Memorial and the Park Service Buildings and Grounds from the listing of dedicated park properties.
Second. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We now have some ordinances for introduction, so this is a first reading. We will not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section One-Twenty-Six-Dash-Sixty-Four Lots of Chapter One-Twenty-Six Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the Paducah zoning com- ordinance, One-Twenty-Six-Dash-Sixty-Four lots, to remove the requirement that accessory structures have to be placed on the same lot as a principal structure.
Second. Hi Steve.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. City Manager. If I could, I'd like to give a brief presentation on all four of the next te- text amendments, since they're all under Chapter One-Twenty-Six zoning. The first one is, uh, under One-Twenty-Six-Eight-S- uh, Six-Four, which is lots. Um, and this text amendment is to allow for accessory stru- uh, structures to be built on, uh, on adjacent lot per a different section. And why is this text change optimal, or why is it good? It allows, uh, for lots to be utilized for residential uses in the future. Currently, the city requires the interior property line to be abolished before an accessory structure can be built. Once the lot line is abolished, you cannot build a house back on it. Um, that's important. Um, as we see some of our existing neighborhoods right now becoming less dense, I think we want to consider what may happen five, ten, or fifteen years from now when we want to try to rehabilitate maybe a neighborhood or go through another rehabilitation phase and bring new infill housing back on. So you, you need to keep that existing lot in place if possible. Uh, it maintains the existing lot density within our older neighborhoods. Once again, uh, a lot of these lots in some of our older neighborhoods may be thirty, forty, fifty feet. Some of our lot requirements right now are, are larger than that. But if you start looking at the density or the lot patterns, it makes sense with, it makes sense within those neighborhoods because that's the way those neighborhoods were built. Um, thirdly, it's a reduction of cost for the property owner. And this is a big one. The property owner does not have to procure services from a professional land surveyor to prepare plat, a map, and then take that to the planning commission to be approved just to build a garage, let's say, on the lot next door to their existing house. That's what happens right now. Over the last year, we've had five situations where people have come to you that wants an adjacent city lot from the city. We transfer it to them, and the next thing they have to do is go out and hire that land surveyor, go through this process just to abolish the interior pro- lot to make the improvements that they want. By allowing that lot to stay, since it's the adjacent structure, we do away with those costs to the property owner. The next is accessory structure, which plays into the same thing. These are just some of the requirements, though, that we thought were important for this text amendment. And that is, accessory structures may only be built on adjacent lots that have the same street frontage as the principal house. And why is this in there? What this does, though, in some of our older neighborhoods where we have a vacant lot, it doesn't allow somebody from a different neighborhood to come in to, to purchase a lot and build a garage in the middle of the ne- in, in the middle of the neighborhood when they don't have a house directly adjacent to that lot. The adjacent lot has to be of sufficient size for new construction. Most likely, um, that means the fifty square feet, I'm sorry, the fifty feet of lineal frontage, uh, for them to be able to keep that interior lot, to put the garage on the rear. And accessory structures on adjacent lots must meet the minimum yard requirements and shall meet minimum rear, rear yard requirements of principal structures. And I have a, a, a slide here next, and I'll give you an example. This is, this, don't mind the side plan, I actually just made this up off of a, of a different side plan that was submitted, but it's an example. You'll see the house to the left. Uh, it's been built, they have a garage in the rear. Um, there's a, existing vacant lot on the side. Uh, right now, if they'd come to the city, we'd give them the lot that's directly to the side, they'd have to abolish that interior property line, so you'd have one house with one or two garages in the rear, and that's pretty much the way it would be forever. By this requirement or these regulations being put in place, they can keep that interior property line in place, they can build the rear garage. It still looks the same, but what allows them to do is, five years from now, they may sell that to their daughter, to somebody else. That person may come in and build another single-family home in front of the garage that they built in the past. It allows that flexibility for future use. The second, uh, text amendment is for go signs. Um, a go sign is a sign permitted on the exterior of a building structure prior to nineteen sixty-six. Where the 1966 come from? Uh, the National Register, uh, considers structures to, that are over 50 years old to be eligible for the National Register of Storied Places. Uh, I figure this is ghost signs, they're somewhat historic signs, so I want to hit, put some type of time limitation on those signs. Uh, it has been weathered and faded to the extent it has lost its original brightness of color and visibility. Couple of requirements that will go along with these regulations. Right now, ghost signs are not allowed. You're not allowed to alter them. Uh, we are allowing this now. A, a ghost sign may not be altered from its original design and size. We don't want you to expand on it. It does not count towards maximum square footage of signs, meaning just because you rehab a ghost sign, doesn't mean you can't put another sign on that same wall that you were permitted before this. Due to the historic nature, ghost signs shall not be considered advertising. Um, let's say somewhere there's a, um, a Coca-Cola or a Pepsi sign on the side of a building, uh, and they want to put that sign back on the building. Um, typically that would not be allowed because you're advertising a, a place or a business or product that's not located at that business. We will not consider it to be an advertising sign. It will be in compliance with the sign regulations with the adoption of this ordinance. Um, our last one is downtown parking. We have a little bit of conflict with our ordinance and I'd like to clean up with this text amendment, but I wanted to show this map first. What you see is what a lot of people are proud of about Paducah and that is our downtown urban core along Broadway and Second Street where you see dense buildings. Um, one of the, um, the goals, um, certainly, uh, and some of the ordinances have been passed in, in, in recent times is to encourage upper story residential zone in our Broadway core. Um, it's going to help out the vitality of our downs and bring people back downtown to live, to shop in our stores. Uh, when you're looking, when you start looking at the parking requirements though, please also note all the parking around the perimeter. Uh, we have parking lots approximately a block and a half from every structure downtown. Uh, there's lots of public parking available. Um, we're requesting to correct a redundancy within the downtown commercial zone. One section requires parking for residential uses, period. Uh, the second section waives parking requirements for structures that have one, two and three units. If the structure has four or more units, then public or private parking is required to be shown available, uh, in the downtown zone. And that can include our public parking lots. Uh, what, what we want to do is get rid of the first section which does not waive parking downtown. Last thing we want to encourage is even the thought of somebody possibly taking down a building for parking to meet one of our own requirements. Uh, I think at this time, we need to be flexible for the re-adaptive use of our existing structures downtown and make downtown as viable as possible. So we'd like to amend the first, take away the first section and just require parking for four or more with proof, um, that it's, um, available already downtown. And that's an overview of the, all four of the text amendments. If you have any questions, please.
I just wanted to commend you Steve on working on this and it's, you know, I said we need to go through more things that are on the books, um, that make it easier to accomplish things in the city of Paducah, to do business in the city of Paducah. Uh, to make it, just make it easier all the way around. That's what you're doing. So, I appreciate it. I don't know how the commission feels about it. I mean, it just makes it easier.
Steve, will we ever tackle, I, I guess I watch too much home and garden television on my Comcast cable, channel 50 I think, about tiny houses? I knew you'd have talked about tiny houses. Would you foresee that at some point, we might move into making an area available for tiny houses?
Um. Certainly, um, zoning was put in place years and years ago for the protection of property values. Um, you know, and there's a lot of definitions of what a tiny home is. Um, some obviously shows, show these to be 250 square feet, 200 square feet, but also tiny homes can be something that's, we already have in our community during the 1950s per se. There's a lot of homes that were built in the 500 square feet, 600 square foot sign, uh, to provide housing for workforce housing at that time. So I think there would have to be discussion for first, what it is and then secondly, where would an appropriate place be in our community for that?
I grew up in a tiny house. I know what they look like.
Tiny little closets and tiny little bathrooms, if you had a bathroom.
Functional though.
Yeah. Thank you Steve.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Wilson, you have the first one?
Goodness, I thought I'd already read it.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, you've already read it? Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending section 126 dash 76 sign regulations of chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city is amending sections in section 126 dash 76 sign regulation of chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances as follows. 126 dash 76B sets the definition for ghost signs. Uh, number two, 126 dash 76E allows ghost signs to be permitted in all zones and districts and establishes the criteria to be followed. Three, 126 dash 76K establishes the rule that projecting signs shall be no larger than six square feet and will be permitted in the B1, B2 and B3 zones pursuant to 126 dash 76C8.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Gold?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending section 126 dash 86 accessory structures of chapter 126 zoning of the Co- Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the Paducah zoning ordinance, section 126 dash 86 accessory structures to work in conjunction with section 126 dash 64 lots to remove the requirement that accessory structures have to be placed on the same lot as a principal structure.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending section 126 dash 108 downtown business town lift zone B2T of chapter 126 zoning of the Court of, of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city removes the parking requirement for residential dwelling units from section 126 dash 108 downtown business town lift zone B2T of the city Paducah Code of Ordinances.
Second. Okay. Do we have any public comments tonight? Any more public comments? Okay, we don't have an executive session tonight. Do we?
I have it, but it doesn't, nothing is marked, so.
So nothing tonight. Uh, we had a great service today. Um, many of you were there and I'm sorry I didn't see Commissioner Rhodes.
I was sitting with Mr. Abraham's wife in the back.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that.
But, uh, it was, it was a great service. I felt like it was something that we needed to do as a community. I think, uh, during these times that people really crave, um, leaders, leadership and, um, and people standing up, not only for the police officers and all the emergency medical services, but, you know, to stand up for the racial inequality in this country and the fact that we need to talk more, uh, we need to listen more. And, um, I think everyone came away from their feeling really good. It's something we've got to continue to do, that we can't do it one day and forget it the next. So we may have to do that again. We may have to have a quarterly service like that to remind us where we need to be and keep us grounded in that.
You know, as you, we, the last, over the last week, um, you know, we all have different, um, opinions on, on different things. Uh, but, uh, for me, it, it all comes back to, um, personal responsibility. And, uh, I think a lot of it today, uh, that was addressed, uh, as individuals. We need to be responsible for how we react to things, um, and not just emotionally react. Um, that gets us in trouble nine times out of 10. So, um, I think the service on Sunday and then today and, and one of the things that's, that's very encouraging, I'm sure all over the country, similar, uh, meetings, uh, were held, uh, where people came together and want, and just, uh, trying to sit down and, and, and talk together, meet together. Um, that's the way you solve, uh, problems about sitting down and, and speaking truthfully. Um, so it was a good, it was a good day, uh, for Paducah and, um, hopefully that ripple effect will go into not only, um, you know, water cooler in the morning, uh, speaking life, uh, and conversations, uh, when we see it going a, a different way, being bold enough to speak and that was talked about today, being bold. So, um, I applaud our community for doing that.
And I'll, I'll have to say, and I told, um, Bernice that our cit- our ambassador here, Cheryl, shared a portion of a story with me and I didn't have time to finish it with her, but I want to take the time to listen to her story and she needs to tell it to the racial unity group of something that happened when she was a teenager that, um, involved a death and how it could have turned her to a life of hate, but she refused to let that happen. So, um, so I want to sit down and talk with her and I want her to meet with racial unity group and tell that story. So, a lot of people have stories like that they need to tell.
Thank you for helping organize it for your leadership on it. It was a really nice service.
And I have, I had the opportunity here today to, um, meet with the bicycle camp group that Bike World is working with and, um, Conrad, I believe is his name, teaches at, um, Paducah Middle School. Do you know him Richard?
I do.
Yeah, really nice guy. So, we, you know, we were talking about, uh, things here at city hall. They enjoyed looking at the model back here and, and they all, you know, were excited that we were going to repare city hall, but they were interested in some of the things back there too, some of the things that could be done with city hall later if we, um, win the lottery, right? Uh, so I, I challenged them to, uh, because they've traveled all over the city to all these places and I told them to try the historic markers route, that that might be a good route for them one day. Uh, to give us some input on their thoughts on bicycles, traveling through the city and how we could improve that Steve. So they'll, they'll give us a little project report and I asked them to do that next week. So, they'll be here to do that for us. Any comments? Meeting's adjourned.